I want to call to order the council meeting of March 12th, 2018. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Here.
Kate Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolfe?
Here.
Scott Palmer?
Here.
Kevin Pring?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
And before we do the pledge of allegiance, I would like to ask everyone to have a moment of silence for Fran Cohen, who passed away on February 26th. Fran had served on council for 14 years, seven consecutive terms, from 1997 to 2011. So if we could please have a moment of silence for Fran. Thank you. We could now all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the council meeting. First item on the agenda is our minutes. There were some corrections that were circulated to all council members. Are there any further changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. Next, we will have the finance report for January 2018.
Included in your packet was the UAN report for the month of January 2018 and a summary memo that talks a little bit about some of our sources of funding primarily through the general fund. So the earnings tax collections for the month of January totaled over $151,000. This is actually down from January of 2017's collection of $198,000. So we did recognize that there is a drop from January to January. The earnings tax collection estimate for 2018 is $2,750,000. So we're into the first month of that. The local government fund netted $4,800 during the month of January. So that brought our total revenue source for January at $201,880. On the expense side, the expenses for January totaled $479,000. Our 2018 budget is $5.1 million. So we spent 9.1% of the budget so far as of January 31st, 2018. And that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $4.497 million. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions to me?
Yeah, I just wanted to take note that that's a pretty big drop. It's 24% earnings tax. Yeah, I don't know what to say about that. And I don't know if I have any concerns or speculate on why.
Okay.
So each month, the finance committee talks about the earnings tax. And one of my constant comments would be that the earnings tax is fluctuating constantly. It goes up and it goes down. And so it's hard to draw conclusions about that. In this particular situation, I think part of this can be targeted towards, we had a great December of 2017. You may recall that with the change of the federal tax law, there was some impetus to perhaps prepay. We don't believe people prepaid their earnings tax, but we do believe that people may have gotten current on their estimates. And so we expect that that would affect us, and we could be seeing that effect with the January's collections. We expected to see it in April. We will know by April whether it did have an effect on us or not. But we think that's probably where that's coming from. But it could also be a trend that is going to begin in terms of lower collections. Not anticipating that, but I think this is the first drop that we're going to see as a result of the getting estimates updated.
All right. Question, I know, and this is to continue on Natalie's point, and I kind of anticipate what your reply is going to be. And that is, it's hard to know month to month what earnings tax collection actually means, unless you see trends over a long period of time. That's what I was going to say. What I was going to ask is, would it be worthwhile to construct like a three-month moving average or something like that to give an idea to council what trends might be happening in terms of earnings? Would that be valuable?
One thing that the finance committee has asked for, and that we've been doing for the last couple of years, is that we look at the earnings tax on a quarterly basis. So the finance committee will see the breakdown by withholding, by resident, and by business. So it's broken down into those three categories, because those are the three that we can track and we can show what the correlation is. So we typically look at the previous year per quarter and look at the current year by quarter and then compare those two. And we do that four times a year. So I think that is the equivalent of what you're referring to, so that we do see it on a timetable, because that's much more valuable, I think certainly to me and I think to the finance committee as well, to look at it in the aggregate for those quarter reports.
Any other questions to me? If not, we'll move on to the next item. And this evening, I asked Rabbi Comenson to come forward, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Put the student out here.
This is a proclamation that Amberly feels is very important. Be it proclaimed, whereas education is a critical component in all of our lives, and whereas Rabbi Menachem Schneerson Mahon has dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind, tirelessly advocated for a better education for all Americans, and whereas the rabbi has taught that education should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, but also on character building, with emphasis on the universal moral, ethical values that are the basis of any peaceful civilized society, and whereas the United States Congress established Education and Sharing Day, USA, as an annual national day to commemorate the rabbi's achievements, and the lessons and the vision he set forth are relevant to us all today. Now therefore, I, Thomas Muthing, Mayor of Amberly Village, do hereby proclaim March 27th, 2018, as Education and Sharing Day, USA, in Amberly Village.
The mayor just endangered himself, asking me if I want to say a few words, but it seems to be that he's not that familiar that you give a rabbi a microphone and you forget about a few minutes. But I do want to thank the village of Amberly, the mayor, the council members, and really all the residents for understanding and recognizing the values of what the rebbe, as we call them, has achieved in the world at large. Today, there are over 4,500 centers around the globe. As a matter of fact, in the Jewish community, there is sort of a joke going around that there's two things you can find all over the globe, and that's kabad and Coca-Cola. And in that order, because there are places where there is kabad but no Coca-Cola. So our emphasis is to see that people should become more educated and live with morality and ethics that the world could become and should become and therefore will become a better place to live in. Thank you. I just showed him that a rabbi can perform miracles.
Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Natalie Fields. I'm the branch manager of the Deer Park Branch Library, which is right down the road in the Dillonville Shopping Center. So I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about what's been going on at Deer Park and your county library. Also to put a face with the name, there are some of you that I recognize from the library, but we are a county library, so you may visit some other branches. So one of the big focuses at Deer Park is kindergarten readiness. And so we have storytimes twice a week in the mornings and in the evenings to accommodate different schedules. And the point of those is, most importantly, to foster a love of reading, but we also model pre-reading skills and support for parents in raising a reader. We offer every child ready-to-read sessions. That's part of a national initiative of the American Library Association. And so those are sessions for parents and/or parents and children that specifically share strategies that foster early literacy. And you might have even seen us recently on the news, we are hosting the library's first-ever eight-week preschool session in March and April. We're really excited about this initiative. There are only a couple of libraries in the country that are trying this particular model. We're partnering with the Y of Blue Ash. Our children's librarians are really great, but they are not certified as preschool teachers. So we're bringing in the expertise from the Y, where they do have preschool education. And the point is to offer a high-quality preschool experience for families who, for whatever reason, aren't currently engaging in one of the preschool offerings. So right now, we've got a full roster of 12 students, and we've got a waiting list. And we're looking forward to having another pilot in the fall. So another one of our main focuses at Deer Park is homework support. We run a homework center Monday through Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00. And then another service that isn't new at all, but a lot of folks aren't familiar with it, we call it My Librarian. And it's basically where if you need help, that's a little bit more of just a walk-in, like, hey, what can I read next? Or I can't get the ebook on my phone. You can book an appointment with one of our staff for up to an hour. And we will help with personal technology, we'll help with reference questions, family history, reader's advisory. You know, I have this fourth grader who's a voracious reader, and I'm not ready for them to read things that are too mature for them. So, you know, how can I get a big reading list that's going to be appropriate? And then we also help with job readiness. So I also want to make clear that I am here tonight representing the library, but as a private citizen on my own time, because I feel like our library is a very important asset, and we do have a levy on the ballot on May 8th. And so council members, you have some talking points. I am always available for questions, but the highlights are that over 80% of Hamilton County households have a library card. So we are very well-used. We're one of the oldest and busiest in the country, and that means that some of our facilities are becoming, let's just say they're not in good repair. So that is one of the things that the levy will address. But the levy also addressed operating costs, keeping the doors open, keeping the kind of services that you and your friends and neighbors rely on available. So our local funding, while significant, it's about a third of our budget, it is the lowest local funding in the state. So you see other communities, like the Greater Columbus area, Cuyahoga County, Cleveland Public Library, they are turning more and more to local funding as state funding decreases. Since the year 2000, our state funding has decreased by 26%, while our usage has gone up 60%. So that's a one-mil levy, so it's less than $3 a month per $100,000 of property value. And with that levy, we can do the maintenance on our branches, and we can keep the services that you're accustomed to available to the public. So I really appreciate the chance to address you all. Again, I am always available to answer questions, and your public library is always available to you and all of your neighbors. So thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Go to your part.
Is this a new levy or a renewal of the one from a few years ago?
Sure. So we had a levy on the ballot in 2013. It was a renewal for 10 years. It was also a one-mil levy. That levy is currently in effect. This is an additional levy. We are not receiving as much money from the initial 10-year levy as we anticipated. Maybe that's similar to like earnings taxes going up and down. So we did feel the need to put an additional levy on the ballot.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, and that's just that the library has a lot of competition these days. I mean, I really, really feel for the library system, because I'm looking at the levy and I'm going, oh, wow, what do I pay for audible? You know, I haven't been to the library in years, in that branch. But I mean, I think it's a question we need to ask ourselves is, to me, the library is, the library is something that is important for the fabric of our community. It's important to have that knowledge out there, and people like you who are so skilled at bringing people in and teaching them how it works and providing information, real information, for people who may not otherwise have access or be able to afford an audible account. I should go to, I should be, and I know that you have people, but good luck.
Thank you.
Just one comment and then one comment, one suggestion. I use the libraries a lot. And I think our library system is very special. Not only do you have hard copy books available, but to me, what I got used to over the last couple of years is electronic books. And it's easy, and it's available. And so I would certainly encourage everyone here in our community to really avail themselves to what the library has to offer. Very special place. And the question I was going to ask, if someone wants additional information in terms of if they're interested in supporting this levy or supporting what the library's doing, could you share that information?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to. Appreciate you asking. So the website, voteforCincyLibrary.com, and Cincy is C-I-N-C-Y. That is where all of the levy information is. And then if you're a Facebook person, you can also search for a Facebook page of the same name, Vote For Cincy Library 2018.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
And next, we have citizens to speak. Mr. Feinberg, I do not believe he is here, so Bruce Lazarus has also asked, just so people are clear, he's not on the agenda, but that was an oversight. He did actually request to be on the agenda and complied with the rules of a request to be on the agenda. It was an oversight, not having him on the agenda. So Lazarus, if you can come forward. Again, the same rules, if you can just say name, address, and then you have three minutes to say your piece.
I'm Bruce Lazarus, 3140 North White Tree Circle, blood type AB positive. I'm here to voice my support for the human rights proposal. But I want to point out that last year, the entire council voted in support of a declaration calling upon the state of Ohio to pass anti-discrimination laws to include protection for the LBG community. It also stated that Amberly is a welcoming, nondiscriminatory community. While many in the LBG community were very proud that this happened, in reality, it was a pretty meaningless declaration. It lacked any real protections or even stated a future course of action for our local community. While I applaud council's willingness to vote for such a declaration, I knew that all the "thereby's" and "whereas's" in this proclamation really doesn't do much. I would put it in the same category as making the public statement, we support the environment, and then not doing anything in support or furtherance of such a statement. It sounds nice, but does little. Since that time, the council committee started with a proposal for legal protections for the LBG community in the areas of employment, public housing, public accommodations, and housing. These are the areas covered by the Federal Civil Rights Act, but don't extend to the LBG community. Recognizing that shortcoming, some states and local communities have passed their own anti-discrimination ordinances. These supplement federal protections and give protections to those who need it. The initial Amberly proposal was similar to many of the local ordinances passed by other communities. After a few meetings and very vocal outcry from a segment of our community who were unjustly afraid that the ordinance would undercut their beliefs, the proposal was gutted, stripped down, and left to almost nothing. While the current proposal is a very small step in the right direction, it still lacks what's needed most, protection in employment, public accommodations, housing. While some may say it isn't necessary since the employers and Amberly may have nondiscrimination in their handbooks or mission statements, these are not legally binding. For example, the J may very well say in writing, they don't discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation, but if they fire a lesbian fitness trainer solely because she is a lesbian, she has no legal recourse. This human relations proposal focuses on the very narrow area of ethnic intimidation in housing. And even there, it really doesn't have a lot of teeth to it. You have to have some sort of follow-up penalty for violations, and it doesn't appear to have that much strength. It still does nothing for protections in employment. When looking back at the declaration that was passed by all the members of this council and the current pending legislation, it falls short. It is a step in the right direction, but more needs to be done. I have always believed in the adage, "Action speaks louder than words." It's time for council to put their words into action. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to committee reports. And the first is the finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'm here to introduce ordinance number 2018-6, the ordinance to amend the village income tax code to incorporate miscellaneous changes in state law. On October 9th, the village approves resolution number 2017-33 to join the coalition, coalition of municipalities who are formed to initiate litigation against House Bill 5 and House Bill 49 for municipal tax centralized collection. This suit went on to the Franklin County Common Police Court, and the judge in that case ruled against the municipality. Outside of the state mandated changes, additional changes to our tax ordinance concerning due dates, definitions, wording, not pertaining to the lawsuit, but part of the changes to the Ohio Revised Code are necessary. Changes to tax ordinance are as follows. One, changing the due date for the fourth quarter individual estimated tax payments from December 15th of the past full year to January 15th following. This will take effect with 2018 tax year. Second item is making changes to chapter 101.1(c)(3) to read penalty not exceeding from previously wording of a penalty equal to regarding unpaid withholding tax penalties. Thirdly, adding the tax commissioner's definition, this refers to the state, 20 tax commissioner by the governor. This term is then to be used throughout the opted language for the state administering, adopting, and governing net return payments. The fourth item changes to the sales tax rollback rule, which really does not pertain to the emergency tax activity. So I would first of all like to move that we waive the three readings of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second that we waive the three readings, respect the ordinance 2018-6, which would amend the village code to incorporate changes in state law. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2018-6. Please call the rolls.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And finally, I move that ordinance 2018-6, amending the Amberly Village Income Tax Code to incorporate miscellaneous changes to state law.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-6. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-6. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And finally, I move that this ordinance be declared to be an emergency legislation necessary for the beaded preservation of public peace, health, and safety for those such emergency is necessary in order to make the village income tax code consistent with state laws governing municipal income taxes to ensure timely and efficient income tax filings and collection, especially prior to the upcoming filing tax. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure which would allow the ordinance to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-6 as an emergency measure which would allow it to go into immediate effect. Please call the roll.
Rich Faradak?
Yes.
Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
We'll now move on to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met a few days ago on March 5th. And there were two items that we discussed, part of which we'll be asking council to approve resolutions. The first item relates to a dump truck replacement. The Maintenance Department currently has four trucks at its disposal that were purchased in 2006, 2008, 2014, and 2015. As you know, these trucks are used for a variety of uses in the village, from plowing and salting, snow, brush chipping, leaf collection, parks maintenance, street and stormwater infrastructure maintenance, sign maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, and other service-related activities that we all rely on. The truck that this request is proposing to replace is the 2006 truck. This truck has considerable rust and has seen increased maintenance costs over the last two years. For example, there are antifreeze and oil leaks. Without a replacement, there's fear that the engine will soon need to be replaced at a cost of about $25,000. While this truck has 55,000 miles of use, this is all local street mileage. While the 2017 budget had included the purchase of a truck to replace this truck, Maintenance thought that this could be pushed out to another year, and that's why it's coming out now. The purchase of a new truck, which is cab and chassis, will take advantage of the Ohio State Discount. The cost, as you see in front of you, is about $80,000, which is discounted considerably from the retail cost of about $130,000. Indeed, the cost of this truck, which is more heavy-duty and will actually be, which is more heavy-duty, will actually be less than the last truck we purchased in 2015. And that's kind of related to the manufacturing truck production runs, so there are more runs in this particular year than two years ago, two, three years ago. Additional add-ons for this truck will include a stainless steel dump body, snowplow, salt spreader, and brine tank. It will be outfitted by Kaffenberger. An additional cost for lettering and things of that nature, and logo for the village, at a cost of about $500. I'm sorry, the stainless steel dump body, snowplow, salt spreader, and brine tank will have an additional cost of about $58,000. So the total cost for the truck that has cab chassis and other additions will be approximately $139,000. So what you have before you are two resolutions authorizing the purchase first of the cab and chassis of about $80,000. And the second resolution is related to the cost of the add-ons, that is, for the stainless steel dump body, snowplow, salt spreader, brine tank, and logo lettering. So the committee asks the council to consider and approve resolution 2015-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase replacement dump truck and sell existing vehicle, something I didn't bring up in my narrative. So there is a possibility that the current dump truck- So there is a possibility that the current dump truck, that is 2006 dump truck, can be sold on the free, on the market, or sold as a used truck back to the Rush Truck Center. It's not really clear if we'll be able to do, we'll be able to sell, we'll be able to sell off the truck to the Rush Dump, Rush Truck Center simply because of the timing. And so, for example, we're not going to give up our truck, the 2006 truck, until we have the new truck come in and totally serviced and ready to, and ready to roll on the streets. That can take three, four months. So at the end, we may just put the truck out for auction, which frankly is not a bad thing to do, because in the past, when we've had to sell some of our equipment on the market, we've actually done better than selling it as a used item back to the dealer, for example. Okay, so again, before you is resolution 2018-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase replacement dump truck and sell existing vehicle.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-5, which would authorize the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase the replacement vehicle, dump truck. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, if not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-5. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed unanimously.
Second resolution before you is resolution 2018-6, which is authorizing, requests that we authorize the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase equipment for the dump truck. This refers to the stainless steel dump body, snowplow, salt spreader, brine tank, and lettering, and the total cost of this will be $58,595.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-6, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase the equipment for the dump truck. Are there any questions or comments?
Small comment. The logo lettering is not, Rich Carde?
Thank you. The logo lettering is like $500, right?
The one thing you might want to mention, just the total cost of 138,000 versus the budget, which was, I think, closer to 160,000.
$65,000.
So it is essentially below the budget of this.
Right, and as I said, that's related to, at least what was communicated to us, that's really my understanding, that's related to basically the cost of the truck being less than what we anticipated from last year.
Okay, there are no further questions or comments. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2018-6, which would authorize the village manager to enter into contract to purchase the equipment for the dump truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed unanimously.
The third thing, or the second item I'd like to talk about is the 2018 Street Program. At our committee meeting, Mr. West Brown presented the 2018 Street Program to the committee. Last year, Mr. Brown shared a list of street ratings for rehabilitation and noted that the worst streets in our village are those that, are those having a concrete base. It's not surprising, I think, something that we've reported earlier. And while many of these streets are in need of repair, a total replacement would be prohibitively expensive at this time. In consultation with the village engineer, a plan has been drawn up to significantly improve some of these streets by replacing the curbs, the milling, and repaving the streets. This program will include Mattson Avenue, Wenwen Avenue, Gardner Avenue, Lansdowne Avenue, and Sagamore Drive. The estimate for the program is about $630,000, of which $200,000 will be drawn from the village stormwater utility fund and the balance from the village road fund. Another item related to the street repair is that you know, last year, the village applied for funding from the municipal road fund for improvements on Kincaid Road, and we were denied funding. The village plans to reapply again, and if successful, will rebuild a portion of Kincaid between North Farm Crest and South Farm Crest. And that's the Streets Committee report.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Okay, now we will move on to the Public Outreach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a very brief report, just to let everybody know that the Public Outreach Committee met this month for, I think, the first time in more than a year, for the first time since we had our new video team. So anyway, the purpose of the meeting was to convey the presentation that was put together by Hollis Bass of We Thrive, which gave us some insight and suggestions in how to better market Amberly. And I hope to see some of that put into use in the future. So look for the We Thrive, We Thrive logo. Back, please.
Are there any questions? Okay, if not, we will move on to the Health, Education, and Welfare.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2018-4, which is an ordinance to combat discrimination and for the guarantee of equality and inclusion. And just some highlights, it's the public policy of Amberly Village to safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination, and to provide for an inclusive community for all residents, businesses, and visitors. And it is the intent of the ordinance in Amberly Village to protect and safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination, including discrimination based on one's membership in a protected class such as age, race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, ancestry, disability, marital status, family status, military status, sex, gender, identity, or expression, or sexual orientation. And the ordinance establishes a nonpartisan Human Rights Commission, whose purpose is not to penalize, but to encourage and endeavor to bring about mutual understanding and respect among all persons, and to safeguard the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination. And this ordinance also adds protections to, for LGBT, for housing discrimination and ethnic intimidation. Back, please.
Are there any questions or comments?
Oh, Kevin, I think, okay.
Yeah, I had a comment. I was looking at this a few days ago, getting ready for the meeting, and I noticed in section 102.09, which is the last section of the proposed ordinance, I would actually recommend renumbering that to .99, 102.99, because every remedy section in every ordinance is always .99, so everyone knows to look there, everyone knows to look at the end of the ordinance to find the remedy. It's that way in Amberly's ordinances, it's that way in every ordinance I've ever read from, from across the country, not just discrimination, I mean, any ordinance. So I would, I would suggest renumbering that to .99, that way if there are changes in the future, the remedy section always stays in the same place. And also, in that same section, I used the word ordinance four times, and I would actually recommend changing that to the chapter. So this chapter, these are the remedies for this chapter, because it's the whole, whole chapter of the Human Rights Ordinance, essentially. I would just recommend changing it to chapter instead of ordinance. It's a very minor, non-substantive change, take care of it today, take care of it the third reading, whatever you want to do, probably by motion, motion to amend the ordinance either now or at the third reading.
So. So I move that we amend the motion to renumber 102.09 remedy section to 102.99, and also to, how many of those ordinances are we changing?
There are four places where the word ordinance is used.
And to also, you only need to do two separate amendments or just?
Just the same one.
And also to amend the use of the word ordinance in that same section to change it to chapter. Wherever it says ordinance, change it to chapter.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded that we will make amendments to the ordinance that is before you. This is the second reading of this ordinance, so we will effectively amend this, and so on, on the third reading, that would reflect these changes in that third reading. Are there any questions or comments?
Just a clarity, so Kevin, you're referring to changing, you're changing the term ordinance to chapter in this new section 102.99?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we amend the ordinance before you during the second reading. Please call the roll, respect the approval of this amendment.
Rich Carde, Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I reread the ordinance this week as well, and I am recollecting from one of the committee meetings, there was a question about whether the committee could raise funds, and I noticed it says "on behalf of the village" in the current edition, and I'm wondering, I just wanted to clarify, was that changed, or is that addressed? Is it, I mean, is it fine to say they can raise money?
I think, is there a particular section you're pointing to that?
It's the Human Rights Commission. It's specifically regarding the commission, and I'm sorry, I don't.
I just don't, I don't remember changing it from the last version.
Well, not the version we've looked at in full council, but it was in a committee meeting where there was a question raised about whether the committee could raise money.
And I think I might be able to answer that. I believe that Human Rights Commission, as a body of Amberly Village, cannot go out and raise money on their own, because they are part of the village.
It does say "on behalf of the village." Was that the change? That's what actually was my question.
So it can go on behalf.
It's stated correctly, so they can operate correct. Okay, that's really my question.
Yeah, those comments were all conveyed to Kevin, and that was how we changed.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Great. Assume that could be.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Police Department.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the third reading of ordinance 2018-1, authorizing a contract with Cost Recovery Corp. for the collection and reimbursement of certain public safety expenses, which you may recall from the previous two readings, is a renewal of a contract that the village has had with the Cost Recovery Corporation to pursue reimbursement of, for village costs for, from at-fault drivers in the village when there's an accident. This only applies to people who are not residents of the village. And so this new contract has an updated list of services and costs and amounts. You may also recall that there were two versions, there was an alternate one and alternate two, and it was stated previously by Kevin that we were going to go with alternate two. So to begin with, I would like to formally move to amend the ordinance to incorporate the alternate two language for the schedule.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance 2018-1 as described. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance 2018-1 that is before you for approval today. Please call the roll.
Rich Carde, Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, and then I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 2018-1, authorizing a contract with Cost Recovery Corp. for the collection and reimbursement of certain public safety expenses.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-1. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-1. Please call the roll.
Rich Carde, Kate Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
And I also want to report that the committee met again on February 28th to receive a number of updates from the department. We do this about quarterly, and residents, we, one of the items that was updated concerns the new Ava Amberly, Amberly Village Alarm System, which residents should have received a letter about in the past week. Program is up and running. It allows residents to have their alarm monitored by the village, respond directly from the village, and there's a whole packet of information from the, from the department if you have questions. We also heard from the department that they are undertaking a really serious review of our 911 operation in light of a number of new factors that are coming into play, specifically new state requirements about minimum staffing levels, and some technology updates in the larger world that are affecting the system, it would require a significant investment. And also, the sheer volume of calls that comes through, and they're evaluating how many of the calls and the proportion of calls that are from the village and elsewhere. We'll be hearing more about this in coming months, as they come to a decision and recommendation in, both in the committee, and then provide very detailed communication to residents. Always the goal is, of course, continuing to provide responsive service to the village. We were also informed that we had previously approved, and they've gone forward to hire a fourth full-time dispatcher, Ben Spears, who was previously with us part-time and had been working in Hamilton County for over 20 years, is now on staff, and in fact, you may see his notices on Nextdoor, he, when there's an emergency, he provides helpful, I think, very helpful, level-headed information. And finally, you may be familiar with the ISO ratings, the Insurance Service Office, which is a nonprofit organization that rates fire services using the statistical risk analysis. Amberly's rating went up to a two from a four, and the highest is a one. It used to be you could get a discount on your insurance based on your municipality's rating, but that seems to be no longer in fashion, but still a nice kudo for our department. So that concludes my report.
Are there any questions? If not, now move on to Compensation and Benefits.
Thank you, Mayor. So our last committee report is the Compensation and Benefits Committee. We met on March 5th to discuss the annual, our annual meeting about staff raises, and just as a, so you recall where our baseline was, our budgeted amount this year in our budget that we approved was 2%. We had our, our usual meeting where the staff committee came and made a very eloquent presentation about their accomplishments during the year, and some information about peer communities. We receive information that is reviewed by the committee about what their communities are doing, about our, our own finances as a kind of a refresher on our finances in this committee. And so we had a very robust presentation by both village manager and by our staff committee, expressing the accomplishments of the past year. And the staff asked for a very hefty, I would say, increase this year, although they gave a lot of very good reasons why, why they, why they believe that that was the appropriate amount. And notably, in their report, also provided some information about what other communities provide, and other interesting information about benefits, and the committee agreed that we will take that up at a separate meeting. So there, there are more to come on sort of a review of benefits, but this meeting really related specifically to compensation. So ultimately, we have a lot of conversation about what was kind of, what was comfortable given the budgeted amount, and also given our financial picture. Two other bits of information that are useful, numbers that are useful in this review, one is that we looked at, among other things, the inflation and cost of living adjustment that was 2.1%, and the committee felt that a 2% increase was not sufficient when, to keep up with the cost of living, and that that was, that was not our intention, was not to have our employees end up worse than where they started with an increase. And the other information, just for, for the, you know, so each 1% this year calculates out to a $33,696 increment. So there, you know, we had budgeted for 2% of those, but an additional, each additional half percent was almost $17,000 additional dollars. So ultimately, the committee, after much conversation and discussion and gratefulness to our employees, who we really love, and hopefully, you know, our employees who are here, will take back the sentiment from the committee that we really do appreciate the hard work in all, in all the ways of our employees, but the proposal that the, that the committee came up with. take back the sentiment from the committee that we really do appreciate the hard work in all, in all the ways of our employees. But the proposal that the, that the committee came up with this year is actually the same as it was last year, which is a 2.5% raise for our employees this year. So what you have before you is an ordinance that fixes compensation for village employees at 2.5%. We will have to do this as an emergency and waive three readings for this. So I move that we adopt ordinance 2018, no, oh, move that we, sorry, move that we waive the three readings. Yep, sorry. Move that we waive the three readings of, for ordinance 2018-7. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt or waive the three readings on ordinance 2018-7. And for, I know all council members know this, but for residents here and for residents that may be viewing this, the reason we do this is because our employees, the time that we give their pay increases, it's effective April 1st. And so this will allow us to adopt increases in a timely fashion, consistent with the schedule that we've committed to for our employees. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-7, or we waive the three readings on ordinance 2018-7. Please call a roll.
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Now, I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-7 fixing the compensation for our employees. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-7. Please call a roll.
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, the, we, I move that we declare an emergency with respect to ordinance 2018-7.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to declare ordinance 2018-7 as an emergency measure, allowing it to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-7 as an emergency measure. Please call a roll.
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Okay, and so at the rest of our meeting that day, and then again today, before this meeting, we took up another item. I mentioned that there were benefits that were talked about that other communities have, but we have a particular employee who is, who has, a wonderful employee who has not been with us for long enough to have banked a very large sick time bank. And so the employees actually asked us, as part of the proposal, to consider creating a sick leave donation policy so that employees who had banked enough sick time could donate sick time that they had accrued to, to other employees who might not have enough time to be able to, to, you know, have pay for their entire, the entirety of their FMLA leave, especially in the event of sort of catastrophic situations and, and situations where, you know, it's a great employee, this is an important benefit, and we, you know, want them to be well and return to us as, as quickly as possible and not be, and not, not have to do so without pay. Our village manager did provide some, some information that many, many of our peer communities, if not the majority, have some version of this policy. So we were, the committee at the March 5th meeting wanted to take this up in, generally thought it was a good idea in theory, wanted to have a specific proposal and wanted to make sure to have that in place. I mean, certainly, it's a benefit that we want for all of our employees going forward. We think it's, it's good to have, but we want to be able to have this particular employee be able to make use of it. And so we will be asking, once again, you will hear all of our names three more times because we're going to ask again for, for the waiving of the three readings for, for this and for, for, to declare it an emergency. And just one other point of reference for council who has, who might have seen a copy of the ordinance. In committee this afternoon, we made some very small changes, one of which was to change the title of the finance administrator so that that title is correct in here. Do I need to read this so that this, like, should I read the change that we made in, under, in section 35.04 J3? It's clarifying that 80 hours of sick leave to another employee on a calendar year basis once it is approved. So we added the clarification that it's on a calendar year, each calendar year, 80 hours per, per year, per employee. Certainly, so, you know, this is, this ordinance, which was, or this policy and ordinance was prepared to ensure that there is, you know, this is not something that, it really is, will not, is not able to be abused. It's really for the intended purpose of really helping, helping an employee in a particular situation. It's not to, you know, it doesn't have a lot of leeway to, to have people kind of accrue leave time and sick time in a way that, that kind of skirts around our current policy. So I move that we waive the three readings with, for ordinance 2018-8. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on, on ordinance 2018-8. Are there any questions or comments?
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Okay, and now I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-8, providing for the donation of sick leave by employees.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-8, an ordinance providing for the donation of sick leave by our employees. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-8. Please call a roll.
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, I move that we declare an emergency with respect to ordinance 2018-8.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure, which would allow it to go into immediate effect. And just again, for residents that are here and for those watching, again, the reason we want to do this very quickly, we have, as was noted by Councilwoman Kamine, we have spent two committee meetings on this and are very comfortable with it, but it's important that it be put into effect as soon as possible because the employee is out on extended leave at this point. And we're concerned that if, if we take too much time, that he would run out of sick leave before we could take this through an ordinary course of multiple readings. So please call a roll on declaring this.
Rich Cardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alida Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
And then just one other comment on this. I think, again, for residents and so forth, we all always know in common how great, you know, our employees are. But, you know, to me, this was another great example that, I mean, this was our employees coming forward, seeing one of their peers kind of exposed to, you know, a financial, very difficult burden, and they step forward. It has a minor impact on the village. It has a more potential, larger impact on our employees, but the employees put their hands up and said they would like to do this. And so again, I think it's again, that's a great sign and something we're so appreciative of, that we have such a great group of employees. And, you know, our residents do a great job of recognizing that at, you know, various times by doing things for our employees. But, you know, I just think it's very worthwhile.
And Mr. Mayor, we wish him a speedy recovery also.
Yes. We will now move on to the village manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to mention four items out of the village manager's report. The first is some kudos for our employees. The police department, the fire department, the maintenance department responded to the recent heavy rains that we had a few weeks ago. There was a large tree that fell on, in the area of Fair Oaks Drive near Meadow, Meadowbrook. Obviously, it took down power lines, it took down cable lines. It was a pretty significant road closure for the village, but everybody responded and I received compliments from residents about how well that was, that was handled. So just wanted to give kudos to our employees on that, on how they responded to that particular situation. The Tax Incentive Review Council, which is a organization that is charged with convening various local jurisdictions, as well as Hamilton County, in reviewing tax incentives and making sure that they are being administered correctly and making sure there is compliance. It's necessary to make appointments for that particular board. It's called the Tax Incentive Review Council. In the past, we have had the Tax Incentive Review Council exist, and appointees were Mayor Muthing, as well as Bill Doring, and that has continued for the last almost four or five years. It's necessary for us to continue that because the tax incentive for topics is still being observed for compliance. So it's necessary for a motion by council to appoint Tom Muthing and Bill Doring to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
And I think we have two more years, this year and next year. And then after that, the, the topics thing will be closed and they'll be fully compliant. So I would like to move that we, we do keep the, the council as, as myself and Bill Doring for the remainder of that period. To the extent that we decide sometime in the future to put a, offer a tax incentive for another one of our businesses or, or a new business, potentially a 2100 section down the road, that would probably need to change because I think the main thing, keeping the, the council the same is good for continuity, but we would want to keep it the same for a new tax incentive that we offer. So I move that we, we as council appoint Tom Muthing and Bill Doring to the Tax Incentive Review Council. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we appoint Tom Muthing and Bill Doring to the Tax Incentive Review Council. Are there any questions or comments? Not, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Tom Muthing and Bill Doring to the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Be noted, resolution yes.
Thank you. The Ohio Collaborative, which is through the Ohio Department of Public Safety, has announced that Amberly Village Police Department has adopted and implemented the state standards established by the Ohio Cooperative, Collaborative Community. You may recall, this was something that the village embarked on when we did away with the accreditation program. And the Police Fire Committee has asked for updates on this. There was a recent update, but after the committee had met, we did receive notice from the Ohio Department of Public Safety that we have complied, and so we're quite proud to have met that obligation. And the last time I wanted to mention is in regards to the asbestos abatement that is occurring at the Amberly Green Clubhouse. Council awarded that contract for those, those services to be done by Rainbow Environmental Services. We also received two grants that helped reduce the cost for that asbestos abatement. But that work began on February 23rd, which is the reason that you're seeing dumpsters and other vehicles around the clubhouse. We anticipate that work will be completed by March 30th. So just wanted to make council aware of that, of that particular activity. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions, the man? Now we'll move on. Okay, we'll move past the chief's report. He heard a report from the Police Fire Committee, so I think that's pretty much covered. We'll now move on to the mayor's report. And the vice mayor would appreciate this. I attended the Hamilton County District Advisory Committee for public health, which she attended a few years ago. This is an annual meeting. We, we receive our health services, we as, as other villages and other township and many cities in Hamilton County, receive our health services from Hamilton County. And as, there is an annual meeting of the villages and townships to review the, both the performance and kind of the issues facing Hamilton County public health. We held, held that meeting today. As part of that, we elect directors and improvementists, you know, very typical of an annual meeting. But Commissioner Ingram also gives his annual kind of look at, you know, what the issues they're facing, et cetera. And to no surprise, the number one thing that he talked about was the opioid crisis. And, you know, I think that comes off, and you see it in the paper every day, et cetera. There was one statistic that I was actually shocked by, but my wife said I shouldn't have been. But the number one cause of death by residents 55 years and younger in 2017 was an overdose from opioids. Number one cause of death. There were, I think it was about 570 deaths across Hamilton County. Those were not all residents. Those are deaths that occur in Hamilton County from an opioid overdose. So it is very much a crisis. I mean, the commissioner was optimistic that he felt like with the things that are now being done, that they may be able to, to change the, the trajectory, which has now been very much an increasing overdoses, both deaths and just overdoses in general. But hopeful that they'll be able to change that to at least flatten out and hopefully then, in the next few years, start a decline. It's very most, very much focused on treatment. They are spending a lot of time looking at death cases and so forth to identify really what happened and maybe, you know, identify, you know, where there's gaps in the system and things like that. There is additional capacity for treatment now in the county, which definitely was identified as an issue a year ago, that they needed additional treatment capacity. It is still an issue, but there is additional capacity for treatment. But, you know, this is one of those issues that is very much across the county. No community is, is not being impacted by this. So this is something that we will continue to hear about and is a very important item that we in fact get our services from Hamilton County Public Health to, to address this, this crisis. There was also, one of the things that they talked about, which is the We Thrive program, which the village participates in. Hamilton County Public Health actually earned an award for the, for the We Thrive program by the National Group of, of Health, Health Agencies across the United States. And they, they are very much, very committed to the We Thrive program. And in fact, they asked me to comment on We Thrive and what We Thrive is doing for us. So they're trying, they currently have 22 of the communities involved. Amberly obviously is one of 22. They would like to get all communities active in that. And one of the communities came up to me afterwards and kind of was asking, you know, what is the downside of participating in this? And I said, well, there really is no downside to it. They said, well, I guess we should probably participate. So hopefully, they, that does go the direction that they want. But, you know, this, this really is, Hamilton County Public Health does do a great job for us in this area. And if there are ever questions around, you know, they, they've moved to a lot of things online that you can get access, birth certificates, death certificates, everything, you know, and they're trying to move as much online. And they are very much about servicing the residents that they care about. So to the extent you have things, you know, questions about public health and so forth, bring the question to us and we'll get you in touch with the right person in Hamilton County Public Health. County Public Health.
So speaking of We Thrive and the benefit to communities and how really there is no downside, tomorrow happens to be a quarterly We Thrive Learning Collaborative. And one of the things that we're going to be doing as We Thrive Communities is brainstorming with each other what each community does to promote the programs and policies that exist in our community, to promote like exercise and activities, initiatives, community events, policy. I mean, we all learn from each other and hopefully bring it all, bring it all back.
So I've got, I've got a question. So when We Thrive was initiated several years ago? Right. There was grant money available, competitive grant money available that, you know, sought to engage different communities. That money's no longer there. Was there, was there a comment about possibly re-initiating some type of competitive grant, you know, to engage other communities? Let's say, for example, communities that have not been engaged?
I can answer that because that question has come up in the learning collaboratives, primarily by communities that weren't receiving some grant. And what we've been told is there, there's no, they're probably.
But, but the one thing I would say, and Lincoln Heights was another community that was asked to, to, to speak today, and they have gotten access to grants. So one thing, again, great resource, great resource that Hamilton County Public Health provides to us through their We Thrive collaborator, collaborators, is that they are very, very knowledgeable of grants that are out there. Not necessarily, they're not Hamilton County grants, but they may be grants through some national program or state program. And they work with communities to help identify the grant and help them put together their grant application. So it, it, you know, it is something that, you know, it may be down the road that they get some access to state money or federal money that gives them some. They don't have the money to do it right now, but they are a great resource for them.
And, and they're proactive, like communities know about the grants too. Emails out every month.
Okay, the next item I wanted to comment on, I think it was last month, I commented on ESP Media celebrating their third anniversary with us. And they are the ones that provide our videos of our council meetings that, that we're now able to watch and, you know, doing that at a lower cost than previously doing. And just some statistics, the viewership on those videos is going up rather dramatically. The, the number of viewing in 2015 was 300 and in 2017 was almost 600. So it has doubled. And, you know, I, I think we want to see that trend continue because, you know, hopefully our residents are informed about what's going on, and this is a great resource to hear what's going on in the village. The next, the other two items I just wanted to mention for residents is that the annual One Stop Drop, which is recycling event where we do safe paper shredding, do electronics recycling and some other items, is Sunday, April 8th from noon to 4:00. For details, just consult the village website for a complete listing of items that will be collected at the recycling event. You can consult the website, cincinnati.com. And, and there will, there will be further advertisements about that. And then finally, the next Environmental Spiritship Committee meeting is March 26th at 7:00 down in the community.
Who's Mr. Mayor? Who's, who would be coordinating the volunteers for the One Stop Drop this year?
They're being, Keith Kramer and Pete Duffy are coordinating. They will be sending out memo with the volunteer sign up sheet. I think that'll probably be out next week. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions or comments?
I just have one, one quick thing from the PRM LSTMC or Summit Night when all the organizations meet there. We would have received this on email from Angela Robertson, their resource coordinator, but on March 23rd, PRM is having their third annual Donuts for Dudes, Pleasant Ridge Montessori, our neighborhood public school, excuse me. They are having their third annual Donuts for Dudes, which is an opportunity for the students to invite their dad or another important male person in their life to come and have donuts at the beginning of the school day. After the first year, they were aware that not all students had someone to invite, and so they have reached out to the community to invite people, men, to come and be with the students. And they have, I learned more about it, they, they have it set up so that kids who have like a dad or an uncle of them ever coming, they're in, like in the cafeteria, and the community dudes go visit classrooms and interact with the kids, and everybody gets donuts. So I understand from the meeting last week that there are three Cincinnati City Council members who are attending this event. So I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, maybe Amberly, I cannot represent Amberly in this way. So it's from 7:30 to 9:00, and we have an email, if you go through your emails, it's from Angela. There's a sign up, I think, I don't know how, it's like a sign up key, I don't know how rigid it is, but I think they want to know how many. So that concludes my report.
Any other new business? If not, you can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.